Merci d'être ici ce matin. Cette session se termine à 6 heures. Vous pouvez aller voir le film d'Al Gore. Je pense qu'il sera écrasé. Vous vous demandez probablement pourquoi il n'y a qu'un nom sur cette session quand la plupart des sessions ont peu de participants. J'aimerais l'évoquer en deux parties avec moi pour présenter certains thèmes dans le titre de la discussion. Puis, j'espère, avoir une discussion entre vous sur certains sujets abordés. J'ai été invité à participer à la conférence à cause de notre engagement dans un nouveau projet pour la Société scientifique du Royaume-Uni et la UC Berkeley. Kyle, qui est ici, est l'un de nos clients. Rowan est du RSS et d'autres amis ici. Sophie et Leah sur cette table travaillent aussi sur le projet et travaillent sur la communication. Ils étaient également impliqués dans la préparation de cette conférence. Donc merci. La première partie de la discussion va être sur ce que les bâtiments font pour les différentes activités qui se produisent à l'intérieur. Et en particulier, je pense que la raison pour laquelle les bâtiments sont construits est pour les activités qui se produisent à l'intérieur. Et à l'intérieur de la communauté scientifique, il est clair que vous avez besoin de bâtiments qui vous permettent de travailler bien, penser bien, faire la recherche très techniquement compétente et puis collaborer. Et cette collaboration est entre les scientifiques vous-mêmes et aussi d'autres disciplines avec lesquelles vous vous engagez, que ce soient les politiciens ou les groupes de la communauté locale. En premier lieu, je vais discuter des types de espaces que la pensée a besoin. Espaces pour la recherche et espaces pour la collaboration. Et comme je l'ai dit, la raison pour laquelle je suis ici est que nous travaillons avec la Prince-Semayr sur des projets nouveaux potentiels à l'intérieur de l'estat du RSS à Amman et à côté de lui est la Prince-Semayr Université de la Technologie. Il y a donc un potentiel ici pour une grande collaboration entre les différentes parties de l'ensemble du RSS et aussi avec les universités adjacentes, partageant les locaux et aussi invitant de nouveaux utilisateurs dans la même zone. Il y a un modèle de ce schéma dans la salle octagonale à la fin du corridor. Est-ce sur ce floor ou le floor en bas ? C'est sur ce floor ? Ok. Donc, des espaces pour la pensée. Beaucoup de travail scientifique signifie maintenant que vous vous engagez avec les ordinateurs. Quel type de espace est-ce que ça a besoin ? Et parfois, le pensée scientifique est toujours un moment d'eureka. Parfois, juste pour penser, vous pouvez avoir besoin d'un espace spécial. Vous pouvez avoir besoin d'un espace avec une vue ou juste un espace à l'extérieur. Il y a de plus en plus de place sociale maintenant dans les universités. Donc, assez souvent, les gens semblent assez heureux et de plus en plus heureux de s'asseoir dans les espaces publics et de penser dans les environnements sociaux, les cafés et les autres. Il y a une rupture en termes d'espace bibliothéique universitaire qui devient assez souvent des espaces sociaux aussi avec les locaux café et différents types de salles de projet associées. Pour la recherche en elle-même, il y a clairement un ensemble de critères qui doivent être adonnés. Des exigences très particulières. Donc, la performance technique est paramount. Il y a différents types de espaces laboratoires maintenant qui sont plus ouverts et utilisés pour différents types d'activités. En termes de collaboration, il y a une discussion ronde des universités sur l'espace académique. Beaucoup des estates et départements universitaires regardent pour mettre les salles académiques ensemble afin que les académiques partagent l'espace. Ce n'est pas toujours approprié, mais c'est de plus en plus une nécessité, juste économiquement à cause de l'utilisation de l'espace. Il y a un débat entier là-dessus. Et ces espaces peuvent devenir assez différents et spéciaux et se rapporter aux espaces de travail et peuvent être utilisables de différentes façons. Il y a plus de place sociale, comme je l'ai dit, que les gens utilisent. Donc, des espaces cafés sont maintenant utilisés pour les réunions et pour la discussion productive. Il y a des espaces nécessaires pour le travail en groupe et les sessions, les réseaux. Un espace avec des tables comme celle-là. Et puis il y a juste des pièces d'équipement qui pourraient devenir spécial. Non seulement la machine de café est importante, mais la printer 3D peut devenir maintenant un focus pour l'engagement et la rencontre d'autres personnes. Les espaces de circulation sont occupés par des tables et des chaises afin que vous soyez encouragé de rencontrer, de vivre et de discuter avec d'autres personnes dans votre bâtiment. Et puis des espaces plus larges qui pourraient s'engager au public. Tout d'abord, il y a les problèmes techniques qui doivent être résolus. Et je vais juste parler d'un bâtiment en détail, qui est le Centre London pour la technologie nano qui a eu des exigences très détaillées et spécifiques techniques qui ont dû être adonnées autour de la radiation, la vibration et le contrôle des différents environnements incluant les salles nettes et l'équipement. Nous regardions des items de scale nano, donc la vibration était très importante. Donc, cela requiert juste la bonne solution technique. Ce bâtiment est juste au milieu de Londres centrale avec des stations de subways près. Et c'était intéressant que je parle à un professeur d'une labo israélienne hier, qui était dans une session. Et il a dit qu'ils avaient un problème similaire quand ils ont conçu leur bâtiment parce que l'université voulait le mettre où ils le disaient et que c'était juste à côté d'une station de train. Vous pouvez résoudre les problèmes techniques. Ça peut coûter un peu d'argent, mais il y a d'autres avantages de placer un bâtiment dans un endroit particulier pour d'autres raisons, pas pour la science. Donc, ce bâtiment avait deux basements avec des exigences très techniques. Toute cette chose, toutes les lignes d'essence, tout l'équipement doivent être mis en place. Un espace permettant à cela de développer avec le temps et d'expandir pour le nouveau science. Et un basement inférieur avec des conditions très stables pour les microscopes électriques et d'autres pièces d'équipement. Ces espaces deviennent occupés et ne semblent pas les photos architecturales où il n'y a pas de gens. Mais c'est comme ça que les bâtiments sont utilisés. C'est la réalité et c'est ce qui doit fonctionner bien. Les autres aspects des composants de la conception ici sont les niveaux de confort pour les gens. Donc, nous avons à résoudre les problèmes pour l'équipement et puis regarder le confort. Donc, les acoustiques de température, les drafts, la qualité de l'air, la qualité de la lumière. Et l'aspect de l'ensemble et de la caractéristique, je pense, ont un grand impact sur la science. Donc, dans ce bâtiment, qui est pour la UCLA dans le centre de Londres, nous avons assuré que les passagers pouvaient regarder l'équipement et que les scientifiques étaient conscients de ce qui se passe à l'extérieur. Même du second basement, il y a des fenêtres à l'extérieur au ciel. Donc, vous êtes conscient de votre contexte et vice versa. Les espaces de lecture ont une vue fantastique et sont juste à côté de certains des laboratoires. Et la circulation dans ce bâtiment a été utilisée comme un glou social pour tous ceux qui travaillent là. La chaise a été mise à l'attirer avec de grandes descentes avec des sièges pour encourager les gens à utiliser la chaise, pas le lift qui fonctionne. Je remarque, je ne sais pas combien d'entre vous pourraient rester dans le Petra Building à Hilton, mais vous ne pouvez pas trouver la chaise, donc vous devez juste utiliser le lift. Pourquoi ne pas mettre la chaise où vous pouvez l'utiliser et sauver l'énergie du lift ? Donc, ces espaces ont des règles où les nettoyants ne sont pas autorisés à nettoyer les cartes blancues. C'est utilisé de plus en plus dans les bâtiments. Des murs en verre où vous pouvez utiliser des pinceaux et écrire des choses. Mais vraiment engager dans les espaces publics des bâtiments et faire ces espaces publics attrapants afin que les gens les utilisent. Ce bâtiment aussi, aussi que d'avoir la possibilité de voir l'équipement, nous avons développé un mode moiré dans le clâtre. Le soleil était nécessaire pour réduire l'échauffement du bâtiment. Mais cela crée en fait des patterns d'interférences pas comme ceux que vous utilisez dans une façon pour étudier des particules de scale nano. Donc, ayant dit ça, c'est juste autour des problèmes que les bâtiments doivent aborder. Et donc, les ambitions de la science pour la paix en particulier demandent un type différent de l'architecture. Et de quelles façons pourrait un bâtiment qui vise à soutenir la science pour la paix être différent de ce bâtiment, par exemple ? Est-ce que un bâtiment qui soutient la science pour la paix aussi aborde les problèmes que nous avons à face ? Maintenant, il y a quatre thèmes très spécifiques de cette conférence qui sont des problèmes pour Jordan en particulier et pour le monde : l'eau, la nourriture, l'énergie et le changement climatique. Et clairement, je pense que si un bâtiment est commissionné pour des efforts scientifiques suivant les ambitions de la conférence, alors le bâtiment lui-même devrait être exemplaire dans sa performance sur ces problèmes. Donc, l'eau, pour commencer. Dans nos plans pour le campus du RSS, la géographie et les questions de gestion de l'eau en Jordan sont importantes à considérer. Et donc, dans la conception de l'landscape, Churchman Landscape avec qui nous travaillons ont identifié les différentes zones climatiques et les exigences d'eau de différentes plantes. Donc, par exemple, la carte en coin supérieur montre le type de landscape à l'ouest du pays où il y a plus de rainuement élevé. Et puis il y a d'autres zones, évidemment, en Jordan qui sont très secres. Donc, nous aimerions utiliser des landscapes secres afin que les gens qui visitent le campus puissent comprendre ces problèmes de tolérance de l'eau et de la fourniture. Tout au long du schéma, nous voulons collecter l'eau de rainuement et puis le canaliser dans un landscape à la base, la partie la plus basse du site pour démontrer comment vous pouvez conserver l'eau dans les temps de rainuement pesant, ce qui se produit. Au moment, il se lave juste le sol et finit dans un grand pont à la base du site. Et donc, créer un jardin qui, pendant des périodes secres, sera sec mais après le rainuement, permettra aux gens de comprendre que c'est une spéciale commodity. Nous allons essayer de recycler pour l'utilisation pour l'irrigation et sur le site lui-même. Et puis aussi avoir des landscapes particuliers afin que dans toute la landscape, il y ait des racines pour permettre des espaces sociaux pour que tout le monde soit à l'extérieur et créer des environnements qui pourraient être pour la pensée et la réunion et la collaboration dans le landscape. Le problème de la nourriture, alors, en termes d'espace pour la recherche et d'environnements universitaires, le café est maintenant le nouveau endroit où vous allez faire votre travail. Pour les jeunes qui quittent l'école, c'est là qu'ils se rencontrent pour faire leur travail de préparation avant les conférences. Ils vont discuter des conférences qu'ils ont eues. Et donc, tout l'environnement autour de la nourriture, les endroits où la nourriture est servie, sont très importants. Donc, la nourriture est maintenant dans de grands espaces qui sont très communautaires à la cœur des bâtiments. Des espaces plus petits, plus intims, espaces qui sont aussi des espaces sociaux. Espaces à l'extérieur, espaces dans les bibliothèques. Et puis, toute attitude sur la façon dont le landscape pourrait en fait croître la nourriture est importante. Ceci est un schéma de logement des étudiants que nous avons travaillé sur à Seattle pour la Université de Washington. Et parce que c'était une accommodation post-graduatrice, les étudiants voulaient en fait avoir une ferme de ville. Ils avaient déjà une ferme de ville en cours. Mais parce que les post-graduates étaient là tout au long du ans plutôt que les undergraduates qui étaient là seulement pendant, disons, 30 ou 40 semaines, les étudiants eux-mêmes gèrent la partie inférieure du landscape et croisent de la nourriture qui est ensuite utilisée dans le café de développement. Ceci est un schéma de jardin de fond sur un projet, un logement dans Brighton. Et encore une fois, cela pourrait être un logement étudiant. Un jardin de fond de 1 mètre par 1 mètre sur le haut d'un projet que je décrirai un peu plus tard où les habitants rentent en fait. Ils ont ce espace, ils peuvent croître des légumes qui soutiennent leur style de vie et pour leur consommation. Donc, l'énergie et le changement climatique sont clairement des problèmes que les bâtiments doivent aborder et que je pense que sont démontrables. Donc, c'était un projet à la fin du siècle, au millénium, qui à ce moment-là était le plus grand array photovoltaïque au Royaume-Uni. Je sais que le RSS est le groupe de recherche principal sur la puissance solaire dans la région. Et c'était une écran qui génère de l'énergie pour l'utilisation dans le schéma mais qui de même est devenu un symbole iconique pour ce projet de régénération. Quand nous renouvrons des bâtiments existants, je veux dire que beaucoup d'entre vous travaillent probablement dans des vieux bâtiments. Il y a un stock augmentant de bâtiments du milieu du 20e siècle maintenant qui ont besoin de renouvellement. Il y a un vrai imperatif pour réduire leur consommation d'énergie. Si nous ne traitons pas le stock existant, et si nous ne le traitons que dans les nouveaux bâtiments, nous ne serons pas près des objectifs d'énergie que nous devons atteindre. Et dans ce bâtiment, nous avons été capables d'améliorer l'efficacité par environ 60% au cours du processus de renouvellement. Et puis les bâtiments qui eux-mêmes peuvent avoir leurs toiles comme photovoltaïques afin que vous puissiez comprendre comment le soleil bouge et où le soleil peut générer de l'air. Et d'autres zones où vous devez arrêter le soleil entrant dans le bâtiment pour le garder froid. Parce que dans des climats chauds, si vous avez tous les bâtiments en verre, généralement ils deviennent trop chauds et vous devez utiliser de l'énergie pour les ralentir, ce qui est ridicule. Et donc, ce bâtiment était naturellement ventilé et aussi fournit son propre électricité. Fourni un environnement très confortable interne. Il y a un standard appelé passive house maintenant, qui a commencé en Allemagne qui est sur les bâtiments breathable et essayant de réduire vraiment la consommation d'énergie jusqu'à, en fait, net zéro carbone. La Université d'Oxford, les estates vont devenir et exigera presque tous les bâtiments à être passive house. Ceci est leur premier bâtiment redéfini, qui est le premier bâtiment passive house de la Université. Donc, le changement climatique est clairement un problème. Dans le magazine New Scientist de la semaine dernière, il y a eu un déclaration que il y aura une augmentation de niveau de mer de 2 à 3 mètres chaque 5 ans de 2030. C'est la prédiction. Et à la fin du siècle, la mer pourrait avoir augmenté par cette quantité. C'est une photo après l'hurrican Sandy dans l'une des stations métro. Cela va devenir courant. Votre propre mer morte, elle est belle, mais elle tombe à 1 mètre chaque année. Et dans les quatre jours de cette conférence, elle a baissé 11 mm, ce qui est ce nombre. Ce qui est remarquable. Et vous pouvez voir ça maintenant dans le landscape. Donc, je sais qu'il y a un projet pour remplir l'eau du Rhinot. C'est un exhibit du Musée Jordan. Mais ce sont des problèmes sérieux que la civilisation et la société architecturale doivent aborder. Donc, en dessous de ces problèmes, il y a un ensemble de problèmes qui pourraient être considérés par les clients et les équipes de conception quand commissionnent de nouveaux bâtiments. Et il y a une initiative appelée One Planet Living que je recommande certainement à vous. Et il y a dix principes qui sont ceux-ci. Il y a la santé et la joie étant le premier, intéressante. Parce que sans un monde sain et heureux, vous ne pouvez rien faire. Donc, comme priorité, il y a la santé et la joie. L'équité et l'économie locale et la culture et la communauté. Problèmes qui ont été oubliés dans d'autres systèmes environnementaux et analyses dans les dix dernières années. Mais l'agenda One Planet Living nous fait penser à ces problèmes. L'utilisation de la terre et la vie sauvage, l'eau durable, la nourriture locale et durable, les matériaux sustentables, le transport durable, le déchet zéro et le carbone zéro. L'année prochaine, il y aura une plateforme de site web lancée appelée onplanet.net de laquelle nous sommes un support global d'un fondateur, en même temps que certains autres ingénieurs. Ce qui permet à n'importe quel groupe dans le monde d'assurer leur propre projet selon ces critères. Et je pense que je recommande vraiment de regarder ça. Quand le système a commencé il y a environ dix ans, l'average humain du Royaume-Uni consumait... Si tout le monde dans le monde vivait comme une personne moyenne en Angleterre, nous aurions besoin de trois planètes pour vivre. C'est la quantité que nous consumions. À ce moment-là, en Bangladesh, ils étaient neutres. Donc, tout le monde en Bangladesh consumait leur portion des ressources du monde à ce moment-là. Et les États-Unis arabes ont eu 16 planètes si vous viviez comme ils le faisaient à l'époque. Les choses changent, mais il y a des problèmes sérieux autour de notre style de vie que nous devons aborder. Et les bâtiments devraient aider à aider les gens vers une meilleure vie. Ceci était la première communauté One Planet Living à Brighton. Ceci est le projet qui avait les jardins de nourriture sur le toit. Et cela avait un espace de travail à la base pour les groupes de la communauté locale. Des niveaux très élevés d'insulation, très faible consommation d'énergie. Des matériaux naturels, donc pas d'échappement. Des énergies emballées faibles dans sa construction. Et aborder les problèmes de déchets, de recyclage et les autres. Donc, quelles sont les caractéristiques qui soutiennent la science pour la paix ? Et j'aimerais... Comment on fait pour le temps maintenant ? Ok, il y a juste 5. Si nous pouvions... Ce que je suggère, si vous êtes prêt, et vous n'avez pas à participer, mais j'ai pensé que c'est agréable si... Dans les tables, et peut-être que vous trois pour rejoindre cette table ou quelque chose. Si vous vous présentez aux autres sur votre table et que vous pensez à un item dans votre bâtiment actuel qui ne aide pas à ces problèmes et une chose que vous pensez changer pour améliorer votre bâtiment contre ces items. Si vous discutez et les écrivez et laissez des morceaux de papier, c'est vraiment bien. Leah et Sophie vont s'insérer et vous aider. Et vous n'avez pas à participer, mais comme c'est l'un des seminaires avec un seul speaker, nous pourrions avoir le plus de speakers, c'est-à-dire combien ? 30 d'entre nous, disons ? Donc, si c'est ok, nous allons passer 10 ou 15 minutes à le faire.
Test. Test, test, test on.
It cannot be a coincidence that our school, though so very connected to our community, is in fact a box brazenly beautifully red. Perhaps the architect selected quite deliberately a paradox, a shape that could contain but would release.
That could confine but would emancipate. As the ruby hues pulsate, they issue a command.
Enter, inquire, inspire, create, and investigate.
The Red House, as it's affectionately known, has become almost the heart of its local community. Now, it's located in Mill Bay, which is down in the docks in Plymouth. And the brief was a school of the creative arts, something that absolutely put creativity at the centre of all subjects.
That conversation that came out of a master planning discussion that we were having with Plymouth College of Art. Andrew Burton, the principal, hatched this idea that actually wouldn't it be amazing that there was more of a continuum within the city?
This idea that an art college would create a school in which the approach to learning in all subjects was through making arose as a response to things that were happening nationally in terms of education policy and also in response to local need.
We didn't really understand quite how wonderfully experimental it was really going to become. Could it be like a gallery, which would make it really exciting? Is it a theatre in that there's performance going on? Or is it actually just a series of wonderful studio workshop spaces? And so a hybrid of all of those kind of space types came together to create the basis for the school.
I remember the extraordinary moment when Andy very nervously prepared us for the image that he was about to show us. And then this bright red box appeared. We stared at it for a long time. And nobody said a word. And they just looked right. The restrictions in terms of what we could afford meant that it had to be a box. What Andy and the team created was this highly perforated box at the centre of which is this huge well of light.
So the building is based on the idea of a super block, but it's not just a basic super block, it's a sculpted super block. Up at high level, we've taken away the old corner and then we've coloured that differently. So instead of the chilly red, we've used a black anthracite just to express where the building's cut. It's not quite a Barbara Hepworth, but it's along those lines where the extracted forms are then coloured differently. So it takes on a really sculptural quality.
It feels bigger on the inside than it looks to be on the outside by virtue of all of these amazing perspectives we have from these huge picture windows. And if that's the physical dimension, it's also the imaginative dimension because the two things are inextricable.
The space facilitates that openness, that sense of community. So many people come round and connect to the fact that it doesn't quite feel like a school. That sense of community and the diversity in it is one of the most compelling aspects of why magical things happen here. So if you're a young person who is connecting to sport and then you've got Plymouth Raiders working and training in the building and reading to our children or having lunch with our children. There's a different quality to that, there's a different authenticity to that. What we're finding with the open plan space is a sort of series of things of how those spaces provoke learning, not just of the students but of the staff.
One of the big elements of working in a space like this is that it's completely transparent. Your practice is transparent, there's nowhere to hide.
Kind of shifts the dynamic of the way that staff work with each other. They learn from each other, but really impulsively then shift into learning with the young people rather than feeling I've got to be in control of something. And the space is absolutely pivotal in that, it really provokes a necessary indifferent response.
We absolutely reject the idea of art or creativity as a boundaried subject. How is language made? How are ideas made? Or how is food made?
How does the cooking in school help with life?
It taught me how to live and how to just be creative with whatever I make. And that can be with food, but that's also to do with anything else.
This in fact is part of their English work. Because after half term, they're going to be looking at Macbeth, the moorland landscape against which it happens, the dark gloomy castles of the time, and the weather. The point about drawing is it's about learning, it's not about making art, it's very much about learning. So drawing is a process of learning in the same way as writing can be, as a way of recording, inquiring, illustrating. This is essentially looking at literature through drawing.
Each child in our school has an individual learning profile and you get to learn everything about them. With this cohort, they all love animals and they've all got quite a few pets. So we decided that it would be a good topic to look at and try and link all our learning around their interests. So what are we doing this afternoon?
Well, we're making a Pet Olympics.
Why are they going to have a cat then?
Because they might get hungry.
They might get hungry at the end.
The Animal Olympics project allowed us to make our maths and our English really purposeful. They did data handling to see what pets we could invite. They really enjoyed looking at food chains because they were talking about having a pet snake and at the same time having somebody's rabbit and then somebody's pit bull dog. So they went away, looked at food chains and came back and said, we can't have those in the same day. So then they decided they would have to have separate events.
The purpose of a school in terms of equipping for life is to shift that idea in students' minds of them being consumers to makers.
They know they're experimental, they know they're on the edge. But what it's created is a school that I think all of us would want to send our children to.
It's really clear when you talk to the children, when you walk around the place, there's a real drive and sense of purpose. It hooks right back into them that transparency of the space because you can see it and feel it and hear it and connect to it, taste it all the time.
I think we're on an amazing journey. We're really keen to understand where they're going to take that journey. And I'm not sure they quite know exactly where the journey's leading them to. And in fact, it seems as if the building has enabled that experiment to go much further than we'd imagined.
So even though it was a school sponsored by a college of art rather than a science institution, I think what's completely inspiring is the fact that this was a product of a brief set by people who had a vision for how they wanted to educate. And the outcome is very exciting. And also in particular, because at the moment in the United Kingdom, education has gone backwards, in my opinion, to a very orthodox regimented form of teaching. And so this is quite a unique take on how education could be. So what are the things, there are things there which I think are applicable to an institution pursuing science for peace. And I think all these adjectives are things which would tie in with the source of science that's being discussed here. And there are ways that buildings can influence that in the way that they're arranged to allow people to engage together and use spaces in different ways, allow flexibility in the future. Different spaces that can be used and configured in different ways over time. Project with public rooms and this ground floor space opening out to the city directly. I think buildings should be inclusive. Quite a long time ago, I designed a building at the University of Leicester specifically for universal access to give blind people, wheelchair users and the like equal access to all the different parts of the building, in particular looking at the acoustics of spaces. I think buildings should be, or the users, proud of their culture, pluralistic, but welcoming to all faiths and cultures. And that's an issue which I think is very important, that we provide facilities that allow a visiting academic, for example, in the sesame session yesterday, they were saying there are scholarships for two months for researchers to go somewhere. They mentioned that it would be great if there were some guest houses. So the whole environment to accept students on temporary sabbaticals is really important. Facilities for social life, engagement with the community. This is a university library, which is also a city county library, and the public can walk straight through this building. And there are spaces for children as well as access to the academic collection. Buildings should be welcoming and provide spaces which could be used by the community and quiet spaces for relaxation. They should be outward looking and engaged with the community they're in. This is the university, sorry, the city library in Brighton, Leah lives in Brighton. It's just got a big window to the city and you can go in, just read the newspaper, look out on the city. It encourages you to know what's inside and to go and investigate. Connected to landscape, this is actually a water headquarters building in Bath where the client said, well, you've got to be exemplary in the use and retention of water. So this has a big water recycling scheme at the bottom, a big tank recycling the water, a landscape that's drought tolerant. And connected with landscape and providing spaces that you can use and look out onto from inside the buildings, which creates spaces in shade or sun but allowing them to be comfortable at different times of the day, but aware of the outside. Welcoming to visitors, this is a Geodrell Bank, a big telescope at the University of Manchester out in the countryside, where we've done a master plan for new offices down there at the bottom for the square kilometre array, an international project. But also a new café so that visitors can just come and see this telescope in the grounds and engage with the science being done there. I think you need buildings that have spaces that are calm. This you can see is actually a brand new nunnery. But there are spaces which just make you feel relaxed and you need to have spaces like this as well as celebrating busier spaces like central library spaces, this new library at Roehampton University. And this is that Worcester Library. But modest and affordable, if you noticed in that red school piece, that was a really cheap building in fact, but it was built modestly but appropriately with exposed surfaces. As long as there's a good view out, you can have very simple spaces. And in a developing world context, this is a medical surgery at the University of Malawi, which we worked on as a charity project. But helping develop skills in that context and using pressed clay bricks, low embodied carbon materials. And using timber as a building material, at least timber can be grown. And so theoretically, it traps carbon and is an exhaustible supply if you plant enough forests. Can create very welcoming environments. And then use materials to add character and detail and design in projects. So projects should be inspiring. Two small projects done by young architects in our practice. This was both competition wins, this was for a project called the Observatory. And these little... wins, this was for a project called the Observatory, and these little buildings which rotate, so you can have a different view, just rotate them with a turner, have been located in different spaces and artists and I think some makers have used them as their studios in these different locations that these buildings sit in. And then another project called Peesu Palace that some architects, this was around air pollution and the fact that you can make small interventions, architectural interventions, which have a purpose. So this, in the middle of the early 20th century, there were Peesu, Peesupers were when there was smog, really poor air quality from all the pollution. And so this was a play on words. The idea is this little pavilion would be built on pavements next to roads and it would serve soup to passersby and the colour of the soup would depend on the air quality index on that day. So Peesu actually was quite good air quality as it happens, but if it was beetroot consomme, it was really poor air quality. So engaging with the city, we are having an interesting discussion about which university in Northern Jordan?
Jordan University of Science and Technology.
Yeah, Jordan University of Science and Technology, which is now IBD, but outside the city, very separate. And actually, there are some benefits and disbenefits of that separation. Mainly it's around security and wanting to have a controlled environment. This project in Leeds, academic and student rooms, but creating, giving things back which are iconic for the city. And then, as you saw, the Red House, which has become a new focus in Plymouth. So just to end the session, actually, we've got about, let's say, 20 minutes. I think it'd be quite useful to just discuss a bit more about what impact you can have and what you should demand from projects at the different stages. So there's, any project has a different timescales. So there's the visioning, the briefing right at the outset, where you want to set the vision for what the project should be and how you want that vision to be set out. So how much do you engage with that community, the client? How much do you discuss with the users? How involved can people be? How much time do people have as clients to be part of that process? And then the design process itself and how engaged as a client you want to be in that. The construction and how builders need to also understand what the ambition is for a project and they'll build it better if the people doing the work understand their part in it, then you can create great buildings. Then in operation, the value that they add and how well they work in use, because so many buildings don't work as they, as the client wanted them to or as the architects and design teams said they would. It's a serious issue. It's interesting, I was speaking to some friends in the Czech Republic and there's a new school of architecture recently built there. And my friend said every time they go in, it was one day a week, this was part-time work, he got a headache and so he didn't like staying in it. And this happens, you know, buildings have an impact on us all. And how should we, how can we make buildings which are going to encourage people, scientists to work with their communities, share knowledge towards making a better world? So if we just discuss that and then we'll wrap it up right at the end. Thank you.
Is there a roaming mic? Hello? All right, Leah. What happens if you're not the client? So there may be some people in this room, probably quite a few of them, who won't be the client but who exist in the building. So are there ways that you can impact the outcome of the brief or the operation of your building without going to an architect or being at the top of the...
Okay. That's a good question because yeah, I'm not directly the client, but I'm working with Ian through RSS to build something that we're eventually going to occupy. Exactly. I think from my experience working with you is that in the end, it's not my decision to make. It's my decision to advise and to give my recommendations on how we think the space would be best used by us as users. But the client actually has to make the final decision, right? And so it's a tough thing as a scientist, kind of letting go of the control.
Research departments, sorry, research departments bring money to universities. So as a user group, you can actually call the shots, or that's what he did. He said he was going to become the director of the London Centre for Neuroscience Technology and he made quite strong demands for what the building should, how it should perform and got, and put time into engaging with that process alongside the estates department. So often now universities have estate departments who are often the client, legal client, and the researchers are the user client. So it's often double-headed, but I think it's up to the users to make demands and be clear what you need and want. Now, quite often on projects, we would recommend to, well, sometimes the universities say this, or we would recommend that they set up user groups who act as sounding boards and also have representatives to discuss the brief throughout the process. I don't think anything, nothing's set up formally on the project that we're working on, but I think that's what should happen. So for this project at the RSS, Kyle is a part of the user group and then there'll be the other departments who are as well, we've met some of them, but I think there has to be a point when that has to be formalized so that decisions are made and everyone is aware of the decisions or so that you can move forward step by step. But if there isn't a brief to start off with, which is aspirational, you're not going to get an aspirational building.
I think we are talking to the students, aren't we, as well? At the PSUT, you know that specifically. So one of the things that came up on our table was about the old and the new. So we have some people from Cambridge who are, have, you know, you've got incredibly old buildings with amazing amounts of tradition and legacy and kind of bringing the aspiration of something which is much bigger than one person, so very much the sort of the past, the present and the future of the scientific excellence, as well as how that then works with the kind of operational need and also bringing together in new buildings as well. And there was a lot of discussion about the kind of, the relationship between the two. I don't know if you have any, if you worked in an area like that, in buildings like that where you've got the old and new, new coming together?
I think in terms of, I think that really depends on as much the technical performance requirements of the new functions. So quite often buildings like libraries, which in Cambridge, some of the college libraries which have listed buildings, fantastic buildings, aren't very well heated, the temperature is not regulated, they're quite random in terms of their character. But I think it's quite interesting that they're often loved and used buildings, spaces, because individuals can find little spaces that suit them in this slightly ramshackle or varied environment. So you can go and sit in the sun if you want to, you can go and sit on a balcony, you can find somewhere that's cold if you'd like the cold. Whereas, it was interesting, you were mentioning, there's a new library at your university which overheats and has the air conditioning on all the time and it's probably rather monotonous, I don't know, we didn't discuss that, but sometimes you need variation in the character of space to suit some functions. Now, if you were wanting to not quite split an atom in a building, you need certain technical performance criteria. And that's when some old buildings just can't be used in that way. But I think the thing to do in an environment with old buildings is to choose uses which suit their, their character and the services that they have. Floor-to-ceiling heights might not be right. Things, the column grid might be too small for certain functions, but you can always find some use for old buildings.
I think that it's really important also to keep in mind that a lot of the buildings in Cambridge or elsewhere, while they may be very grand and old and fun to visit, when it comes to trying to convene people in them, oftentimes we find that, for example, I did a lot of political organizing in Cambridge the past year and we purposefully oftentimes wouldn't host our meetings that we wanted the general public in the town of Cambridge to also attend in the university because we understood that the buildings themselves hold baggage and they sort of can be very imposing to people who don't consider them to be somewhere where you frequently visit. And if a space feels imposing on somebody, it oftentimes silences them. So if you're somewhere where you feel uncomfortable, you're more than likely not going to discuss politics or your personal beliefs behind, on a specific topic, or you may just not even go there at all. So we purposefully would go to more community oriented spaces, even though we had the space and the facilities, it just, it had to do with the sentiments embedded in the buildings that, yeah, we wanted to be more inclusive.
Is it done? Oh. Yeah. We are from Turkey, so we are Turkish, but I was born in Germany. So there's one comparison I want to make. So in European countries, it's normal to keep your window open, right? So you can, if you live in an apartment, someone else can just look into the apartment and see you, whatever you're doing. But in Turkey and I guess also in other countries, privacy is very, very important. So in Turkey right now, I see all these Western architects are doing these great buildings with these big windows and I see they're building it, you know, in Turkey's build, and then they modify it with curtains and the buildings just lose, you know, their purposes. So I was one, okay, so socializing is very important in this part of the world, but we also like to keep our privacy. But I don't understand why this does, this characteristic does not reflect into the design that you guys are doing for our countries. I, till now, I never seen, at least in Turkey, I never seen such a building which was designed by Western architects. And I have to say, in Turkey, most of the big buildings are actually designed by Western architects, so Turkish big company, I mean, construction, yeah, they actually let their buildings designed by design companies in the West, Germany, Italy, I think also Spain. Yeah. That's my question, like, why are they designed as they were in a Western country?
Okay, so there are a number of reasons for this, I think. Certainly, you're raising a particular issue around visual privacy and separation between the public and private. Yeah. Now...
The public is like, I can see like this glass structure and they're all the curtains, I can see it.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. So I think that there was a big problem in the late 20th century when progress was almost made synonymous with glass buildings. Certainly that happened in the Gulf states, all these mirror glass buildings and glass buildings. And also, I mean, the same thing has happened in England, say. There's a fashion for glass facades. And then in offices, you just see everyone's litter bins and legs under the desks and in that environment. I think you're recognizing something a bit more particular and cultural though, not just a practical problem, because there are two sides to it, aren't there? One, there's a practical problem about having all that glass, gets too cold if it's cold outside often. You get too much sun, you need this glare, you need shade. But it's something which in this project, we're starting work on here in Oman, we're very aware of. And I think that we've got to be very careful about how we design buildings and that relationship. Those barriers in terms of privacy, I think, are really important to understand. Slightly, Leah, do you want to add something?
If the client says, we want a swishy building like one in the West, that's what they're going to get. Whereas if a client says, what we want is a building that's culturally sensitive and reflects, you know, the Turkish culture and needs, then that's what they'll get. So it's a similar question actually as to here because it's, there is a huge danger of shipping sort of cultural mores all around the world without sensitivity, but it's the responsibility of everybody involved, not just, you know, a Western architect who's been briefed to give a swishy building, you know, a flash, we want a flash one, you know. And where does the responsibility lie, I suppose is the question.
There are more complex issues, I think, which if you're not part of that culture, it's difficult to understand. But for example, there could be issues in the workplace where, where the, having an open plan environment with men and women working in it wouldn't be appropriate because unless you are very careful about providing private spaces for private conversations and things. So in a, in a UK environment, there are real problems with open plan spaces when they didn't also provide private areas, meeting rooms, private meeting rooms that weren't glass walled, you know, with solid walls and solid doors. Sometimes you want to go in a room and not be aware of people looking at you. I think it did crop up around here where there are situations where, I think women here, I might be getting into tricky territory, but I think in particular in an environment, they would want, would only want to take phone calls in a certain, without being overheard, you know, men as well, I'm sure. So we've got to be aware that if we just came in and said, well, it's not glass windows but open plan space for everyone, you might trip it, step into a completely unworkable environment because it doesn't suit that culture.
Who's responsible to pay for the shares, but is it also responsible to the architects to ask these questions? I think that's the client oftentimes a little overwhelmed.
Right.
They're not considering these issues because they assume that you understand what's going on.
I think that's very true.
I think if you have a really good architect, then they would definitely do that. So, you know, there's a lot of other architects who are more, who will just have their signature kind of way of designing and often clients get really, you know, doesn't really want to have that kind of building. But I mean, I think what's interesting here, working in Oman, is also the idea that actually building a glass building would be very inappropriate in terms of the fact that you would need so much water to clean it. So there are other factors that come in, it's not just about culture, it's environmental, knowing that actually the concept of having a building that really needs to be kept clean and where you've got like issues around water and dust is a really, it'd be really daft, you know, so I think there's all of that as well. And I mean, there's another example, like in the, we were talking about the University of Manchester, they built all these new offices and labs for the scientists and put loads of big walls on and the scientists actually said, we want our black boards back because culturally they're what we've always worked on and we don't like the white boards, we want black boards and chalk. But, you know, that's actually understanding what makes people get, how they can get the best results out of the people who are using the space and being very user-centered, and that does definitely come from a really good insightful designer, architect personally, and not only how they're briefed, but how they respond to it and how they redesign the brief almost to actually make sure that it's exactly the right challenge that they're answering.
Yeah, well, that was one sort of reminder of the One Planet Living ten principles is that there's a culture of one, and often it is forgotten, and so it's very important to just remind ourselves that we've got to ask the right questions about that issue. Is there, I mean, in terms of science for peace, as discussed, and how people interact, are there, is there one, does anyone have one, each person have one particular thing they would want in a building to try and make our work more appropriate for the problems that we're having to face? It's a difficult question, because I'm battling with that. A few years ago, it was a cup of coffee. Actually, could I ask a question then? Because at the spot at the RSS or PSUT, which is next door, which seems to be the place where there's social conversation, is on the open pickup truck doors of the cars in the car park, where the students just hang out around the cars and chat and meet. Is that a cultural thing, or is that because there's nowhere else to go? Cultural. But what is particular about it?
I believe that it's a bit of both, some, a part of it is cultural and a part of it is, please don't find a manner, please prevent you from being, and find, to talk and chat.
And it's always abundant.
Inside the building, it's mainly classrooms and hallways.
Great. And is some of that chat, it's not all social, it's sometimes talking about your work. So we could, the car park is a really important spot, yeah?
I used it at the American University in New York. In New York, there's like a lot of landscape.
There's a lot of landscape there, and I think they didn't take advantage of that, you know, there are like a lot of landscape they didn't take advantage of where they could have, you know, put on like some benches or places for students, you know, to communicate with each other, to sit around, you know, and socialize. We don't have that over there, so we suffer from the same problem I think that PSUT has, which is probably why they, they're always in the parking lot. Yeah.
Great.
This idea of social, this microphone's much better. The idea of social spaces, we were just talking that scientists, as a community, are very socially awkward. And there's all these wonderful, beautiful spaces of places to go and talk, but if you ever see three scientists, four scientists together, we're kind of just staring at each other, if it's not about science. So what's your take on that? I mean... Yes, yes. I mean, we have something called ChemCage every Friday, and if you look and watch all these people talking to each other, they're standing in a circle, not talking, honestly.
And they get irritated, you know, if you, after a while, fully are anxious because of being there, trying to socialize, they want to go.
It's very forced, yeah. That's usually what it is. So you give us our blackboards, we'll start talking chemistry, science. Yeah, yeah. With coffee machines for Christians.
I'll just wrap up because it's time, and I just wanted to mention two things. There's an organization called the Higher Education Design Quality Forum in the UK, it's a charity, and it shares information across university estates and academic departments about the built, about design. They've got a website, it's worth looking at that, and there's a book which I edited but was for, sponsored by the Higher Education Design Quality Forum, published by the RIBA called Future Campus. I've got a copy here, which just discusses some issues around the design process which might be of interest. So thank you very much. Thank you for being engaged this afternoon. Thank you very much.